Have you heard from Gavin?
Yeah.
No, I mean...
Yeah, he said he was gonna be here.
He's going now.
Oh, just trying. Sorry, I wasn't happy you'd come by this agenda, but I'm glad to be here. Thank you, thank you.
It's hard up here.
Probably right.
Is it cooler in there? It's so fun here.
I'm a pastor, I believe. Maybe she's not pastor, she's a...
Doctor, this is...
Was that Tom Sawyer or Tony Murray, Ken? Where they made that noise, voided the riverbank?
No.
Was it Tom Sawyer or Tony Murray, Ken? Where the four guys were on the rock?
Which, which was...
Yes. Yeah, yeah. You remember that, though? That's what I was thinking of. They were doing those plots ago?
About forty million dollars.
Yeah, like, out west on some of the rivers?
Thirty, thirty-two hundred.
Yeah.
We had a mountain view over there.
Actually, I'm a fisherman.
Very similar.
Wow.
Is this where the people got wiped out?
Yes, thank you.
So... You got a minute? Ready? Jen, do you record? I'm waiting for him to respond. Good evening. The Monday, May 14th, 2018 Common Council meeting is now in session. Would you please rise? Our invocation is by Dr. Alyssa Coates, Director of Development, East Region, University of Notre Dame. I'm sorry. Yeah, May, May 14th. Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Doctor, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Thank you for each person present here this evening, for the gifts and callings on their lives, and for the opportunity for us to pray collectively as a community. We do not take it for granted, but use this space and time to come boldly before your throne and declare the atmosphere of peace, joy, and love over our city, our leaders, our children, and our families. We invite you, Holy Spirit, to rest in this place during this meeting to assist with addressing the needs of us residents. In your wisdom, grant us the humility to seek first to understand, then to be understood, to do everything in our power to say yes before we say no, and to allow your love to inform our decisions that we may find common ground that will unite us and not separate us. We thank you for this great city we call South Bend. We declare it a place of refuge. We, the citizens, are voices for the voiceless, hope for the hopeless, and peace for the restless. Even as we witnessed an abundance of rain today, we lift up our city to declare your promised healing, deliverance, and restoration. Our city not only have the answers for our community, but for the nation and the world. You have commanded us to create our atmosphere, and therefore, this evening, we take this opportunity to thank you for enlarging our territory, for taking us to new levels, realms, and dimensions, to be dependent upon each other and not allow our fears to limit us, paralyze us, or shrink back from fulfilling our God-given purpose. Our city is the light on the hill manifesting heaven here on earth. Thank you, Father, for allowing us this evening to look through your eyes of faith and call forth our city of South Bend as you see it. Amen.
Thank you, Doctor.
By the Lord, my goodness, and the United States of America, and through your power, the world stands. My nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as strong.
Thank you. Praise God. Please be seated. If you would, please turn yourself on to silent. It's all right. Ms. Fowler, we're called.
Councilmember President.
Here.
Councilmember McBride.
Present.
Councilmember Broden.
Here.
Councilmember Barnum.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Gordy.
Here.
Councilmember Furley.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Non-present.
Thank you. Subcommittee on Minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has an exception to minutes of the April 9th, 2018 meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend it being approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now we'll turn to Special Business. Uh, Ms. Fowler, just for formality, would you read 0518?
0518. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3527 Lincoln Way West, Councilman District Number One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll do discussion. Motion to override the mayor's veto?
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. I'd like to hear from our attorney to, um, about the parameters about how this all works to the public right now.
Because the, uh, the ordinance is the same one that was passed by the Common Council two weeks ago, and all public attention at that time was raised and debated. There will be no public discussion here this time. Uh, the discussion will be on council members only, considering, uh, grounds to override the mayor's veto. It requires a two-thirds majority of the council, in other words, six votes to override the mayor's veto.
This time... Any follow-up to that, please?
Sure.
Um, this weekend, we received a letter from Attorney Nessbaum regarding some of outlines regarding, um, the final nature of our decision tonight. And you kind of responded to some of that today. Could you please give us some enlightenment on what you shared?
Um, as far as the court action, possible court action?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Um, technically, there is no, uh, availability or review of the council's decision or the mayor's veto for the zoning issue. Uh, there is no appeal to the court itself. However, if either party, uh, is agreed by the, uh, decision tonight, may file a declaratory judgment action in state court challenging the decision on constitutionality grounds or arguing that the, uh, decision was arbitrary and capricious. Uh, those are the only grounds that should be raised in a declaratory judgment action.
What, um, so laypersons, when people... What is, in legal terms, the, um, you understand the word arbitrary and capricious?
Arbitrary and capricious would be number four. Basically, uh, as applied to this situation, without basis in, in the legal criteria that are to be, uh, examined in making a decision if something outside that criteria...
So you're talking about the five characteristics that we...
Five criteria or...
So if you, it's been saying that that's outside of that, then...
If it's outside that and the decisions are made on other grounds that would be arbitrary, arbitrary and capricious.
Okay. Vice President Davis, I'll defer the floor to you at this point. Anything else that you'd like to say?
Um, I would like, um, to... If there are any comments? If, would we be allowed to all have any comments? Are we gonna move toward the vote, or...
We're in the comments right now. This is the discussion part.
Cool. Um, then, I will go ahead and share. Um, when I got up, well, before I went to bed last night, made sure I had my favorite bowtie ready to roll. And so it was right there on the side, so I didn't have to ratchet onto this one because of the fact that, when I put this on, it reminds me of what this nation is all about. And, um, some were surprised with one of me being on the five, but as the Chair of the Zoning and Antigization of this council, you know, looking at this for the, um, being on this committee, um, there's the issue of, I would say, fairness. A person asked me and said, "If it wasn't the Women's Care Center asking for this, um, request, if it was this Joe Blow, whatever, what would your answer be? What would people's answer be?" I said, "They probably would grant it." They probably would. Even if somebody had just paid $500,000 to buy a place, so, and that... Because we get a lot of special requests all the time for people to buy something, and they need something and they wanna do it, probably still go ahead and do it. And I thought about that when I told them that. Um, should I change my opinion just because of that? It was vice versa. There are people on the left who took time to go and protest President Trump. I understand that. There are people who came and took time to protest President Obama. I understand that when he came. And I really am very concerned with the mayor's comments when he talked about, "Well, what's the community's good?" As an African American, and watching my parents, who both had to be on the back of the bus, both of them had to deal with all that stuff in here in community, but we want to hear what the community has to say first? It shouldn't be whether, um, a person is Catholic or pro-life or whatever. People need to learn how to live next to each other. And we have a good police department, and you can't have a, uh, LGBT and a person who's not, or a black and a white or Catholic and a non-Catholic person loves God, person who hates God. Oh, no. They may argue, they may fight, they may not let their dogs play with each other. Okay? Protest is a part of life. And that's what we have. That's what this whole bowtie is about, protest. I've watched marches with the women's groups so they can protest. I've marched with our Latino groups so they can protest. I march with all these other units. I was out there in Honeywell so we can protest. I'm, I'm a blast for protest. And so, I mean, what they're doing for the retirement thing over there is ridiculous. I won't go on that. We're here for the zoning. And so, um, those are the things that we have to stay focused on. And it's easy to get caught up in this side versus that side or this thing. And people say, "Well, I'm just gonna... I understand you, that's your district." People, "Well, I gotta vote for you." When it came down to the bars, everybody's gonna vote for me 'cause I was fighting for my bars just because of that. We have to look bigger than just who else is represented there. We gotta look at those laws. And in that fairness law, I think that we should, um, override this veto. The mayor himself said that it was over his credit rate, so we should not listen to that. He said himself that he didn't base it in law. Okay? And he said all this other kind of thing. These are his actual words. These are his actual things. So why should we follow his advice on something like this? Finally, down south in Indianapolis, the Women's Care Group of Texas is getting a rough time because of the conservatives are giving them a rough time. That's wrong, that they are getting a rough time being able to establish their issue. So should we flip it around and give the other side a hard time here? They're wrong down south for doing that, and we would be wrong if we don't allow this to move forward. And thank God for our legal system. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the five that voted in favor? Just Google that, Rob.
Uh, sure. Um, let me just start by saying, um, in the nearly forty years of, uh, public life, public service that I've put in, I've never been more convinced that I'm doing the right thing by voting to allow the, uh, Women's Care Center to operate in, uh, where they've chosen to file a petition to do so. Um, the mayor's, in my interpretation of his remarks, uh, he said that, uh, this would cause disharmony in, uh, the neighborhood. Um, and it's not Women's Care Center that's causing this disharmony, or the fact that Women's Care Center is, you know, maybe next to a, uh, an abortion clinic. The disharmony, if there is to be such, is by the element that is so pro-life that they will, uh, picket and do other things, which, uh, which I find, uh, regrettable for something that, uh, regardless of my personal stand, is the law of the land. Um, I don't think that that should happen. It happens because of the potential abortion clinic, not because of women's care. And I think women's care, actually, by their chosen location next to, uh, the proposed abortion clinic, will have a tendency to suppress opposition. Uh, with all the concessions they've made and all the investment they're ready to make in that facility to provide a service, an alternative to abortion, I think that, uh, their presence next to, uh, where they want to be is, um, provides a, uh, a better alternative, a more, uh, more available alternative than, uh, than if they were a block or ten blocks or ten miles away. Uh, the, the potential for... I hesitate to call it civil unrest, but the, the potential for protest is going to, is going to be there regardless of women's care. So I think we ought to think in terms of what does women's care provide? How do they go about it? And who benefits from it? And I think who benefits from it are the people who most need it, the people who, uh, you'll probably... Or I've heard it said by many people sending me emails and calling me and talking to me on the street that women, um, who find themselves in this circumstance have ample opportunities to decide what's best for them and their child. They're unborn, uh, without intervention from, uh, certainly picketers, but women's care. And I don't know that that's exactly true. Um, I know, uh, you know, I know I'm a guy and I'll never be in that circumstance, and I won't have to make that kind of decision, but I would sure wanna know all the facts. And as me representing citizens from all over this city, I would hope that, um, that the services, the information, the care, the support that women's care allows people, uh, women in that situation and families, it's, uh, it's men as well, um, will help them make a, uh, a decision that they can live with for the rest of their lives. Um... It's, uh... I was gonna bring my own circumstance into this discussion, but, uh, but I won't. Um, except to say that I have a daughter for whom, uh, abortion was suggested because she has a disability. Thank God we didn't choose that option because she's the most wonderful girl any parent could want. And I know this. I don't want this to cloud the issue. Let's just look at the five criteria. I got that over with. Um, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's fine, John.
But in the... If you look at the five criteria, the way I interpret these criteria, and I know that they're subject to interpretation, I, I think that it's a no-brainer. This should be allowed. And I'll stand on my original intent to support the women's petition. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Gavin, you have the floor.
Sure. So, um, looking at this issue for me has always been about the fifth criteria. I know the criteria aren't up there anymore, but it's about responsible development. Um, always had a fear that this property, regardless of who owned the property, could be used for protests, harassment, creating an environment that's not peaceful for the community. Um, however, the written commitments that are in place, uh, those do run with the land, I feel they are very strong. Uh, they give me comfort as well as the mission of the Women's Care Center. Um, so I will continue, uh, my position on this vote. Uh, however, with that in mind, especially regarding the mission of the Women's Care Center, I certainly have an expectation that regardless of what happens with the vote tonight, that the Women's Care Center will do everything in their power to ensure that that property is not used for any harassment or, uh, anything negative. Um, that includes a property transfer, that includes any type of use. Uh, would expect that, um, you know, would expect that, uh, that it's true to that mission, um, of loving and respecting women. Um, and finally, I'll just make a note, um, once again, that, you know, council colleagues, I've had a lot of discussions with a number of, number of members of the council. Um, the members who are maybe not voting in favor of the rezone or not voting against the Women's Care Center, this isn't opposing an organization. Uh, there are five zoning criteria that every council member needs to take a look at and make their own interpretation. And I certainly respect the opinions of all the council members, of both those voting in favor of the rezone and against the rezone. But for myself personally, with the written commitments as well as the mission of the Women's Care Center, I do feel comfortable with the rezone, so I will be supporting.
Cool. Thank you. Ms. Broden?
Sure, thank you. Um, I've actually prepared, uh, some statements that will, um, get to some of the basic arguments that were proffered, um, by the opinion of our chief executive. Um, first and foremost, um, the council and our community should be able to rely upon and trust the opinion of the mayor's professional planning team and the planning process, which informs decisions. The opinions that, uh, they have rendered to the South Bend Common Council, they being the Department of Community Investment, have never been restricted to questions of mere density or any other narrow consideration as stated in the mayor's letter to council. It would be atypical of these professionals, again, within our Department of Community Investment, to proffer an opinion that did not look at the broader criteria. And logically, it does not align with their role they serve relative to the Area Plan Commission from which this petition originated and the council, who by state statute must tie our decisions to the five rezoning criteria. All total, our planning staff rendered an opinion on this rezoning, put it in writing, and/or allowed it to be heard in a public hearing no less than seven times. And their opinion is unmistakably clear and on the record, seven times. And it reads in its entirety, "Community Investment offers a favorable recommendation. The future land use plan in the West Side Main Street Plan designates this parcel as the westernmost parcel in the Bendix Node. Thus, a use more intense than single-family residential would be appropriate." And the opinion significantly continues. So, comma, "and," "the proposed office buffer zoning would provide a transition from single-family residential parcels to the west to the suburban commercial uses to the east." The veto letter, which we received as council and released to the press, failed to encompass the most significant portion of the Department of Community Investment's opinion. Additionally, and maybe even more problematicly, it disassociates the opinion from the broader planning document that was operationalized in 2015, known as the West Side Main Street Plan. That plan was approved unanimously by the Area Plan Commission. It was approved by the South Bend Common Council, and it subsequently was approved and signed by our mayor. The plan's purpose: It's a market-based strategic revitalization plan for Lincoln Way West and the Western Avenue. It's to restore the historical walkable development pattern, allowing Lincoln Way West and Western to reassert themselves as vital, primary streets, and to give life to the neighborhoods that they run through. Additionally, it provides short and medium and long-term strategies for these corridors. It has a detailed implementation plan, a matrix of activities to occur in the first five years. And I remind you, this plan was operatized, operationalized in 2015. It includes the matrix of activities to occur in the first five years. Among these are zoning changes. Through the city budget that we approved and have approved, at least during the duration of my tenure and previous to my tenure, the tax incremental finance districts that we have chosen to realign have brought resources to these corridors. We were told at the time by the same planning staff that adopting the West Street Main Street Plan as an amendment to the city plan will set a clear land use policy and expectations for development along the corridors. This request fits the plan in form and indeed considers the vitality of the neighborhood. If the council or our community can't rely on the Department of Community Investment or gets blindsided well after the public discourse is closed as to the administration's intentions or opinion on zoning or proposed investments in our community, where does that leave us as a council? Where does that leave us as a city? Is it not better that we have reasonable expectations about our built environment based on an aspirational plan crafted by the community for its own revitalization? All are better served: the petitioner, our budgetary decisions as a council, the decisions of investors, businesses, developers. They're all better served That plan was approved unanimously by the Area Plan Commission, it was approved by the South Bend Common Council, and it subsequently was approved and signed by our mayor. The plan's purpose, it's a market-based strategic revitalization plan for Lincoln Way West and the Western Avenue. It's to restore the historical walkable development pattern, allowing Lincoln Way West and Western to reassert themselves as vital primary streets and to give life to the neighborhoods that they run through. Additionally, it provides short and medium and long-term strategies for these corridors. It has a detailed implementation plan, a matrix of activities to occur in the first five years. And I remind you, this plan was operationalized in 2015. It includes the matrix of activities to occur in the first five years. Among these are zoning changes. Through the city budget that we approved and have approved, at least during the duration of my tenure and previous to my tenure, the tax incremental finance districts that we have chosen to realign have brought resources to these corridors. We were told at the time by the same planning staff that adopting the West Street Main Street Plan as an amendment to the city plan will set a clear land use policy and expectations for development along the corridors. This request fits the plan in form and indeed considers the vitality of the neighborhood. If the council or our community can't rely on the Department of Community Investment or gets blindsided well after the public discourse is closed, as to the administration's intentions or opinion on zoning or proposed investments in our community, where does that leave us as a council? Where does that leave us as a city? Is it not better that we have reasonable expectations about our built environment based on an aspirational plan crafted by the community for its own revitalization? All are better served, the petitioner, our budgetary decisions as a council, the decisions of investors, businesses, developers, they're all better served if we all know and operate with the same game plan and utilizing the same criteria. Criteria that gives the same due process rulebook to any petitioner. That gives us collectively a land use roadmap that leads to reasonable assumptions about investment decisions, large and small. And it aims toward growth and development. If you don't trust me, there's letters that we have received from local developers who have, who, quote, "Land use plans create and approved by a city which I plan to make significant private investments and for the city to act consistent with those plans." I'm sorry, I didn't read that all correctly, that's okay. Therefore, I cannot support a veto message that is dismissive of our primary and first evaluative criteria relative to land use decisions. In this case, the comprehensive plan and the sub-plan, if you would, the West Side Main Street Plan. Nor do I wish to set precedent that the opinion of our professional planning staff relative to the plan, which they are primarily tasked with implementing, just doesn't matter. So, a body of nine fully engaged citizen representatives, elected by our neighbors, considers rezoning month in and month out through the lens of very specific criteria, and they are up on the board. And they've been discussed exhaustively since, I believe, January 8th of this year. And they've been framed, been framing our discernment process. A body of nine fully engaged citizen reps are also aware of past decisions and the precedent nature of current decisions. It is empowered and entrusted in nearly every other city of our state to make these decisions without the threat of mayoral veto. But that's not the case here, and I get that. So, to the criteria. The criteria which we are asked to make our decision upon matters. Adherence to the criteria matters. I would argue, not just for the Area Plan Commission and us, the South Bend Common Council, but it should matter to the chief executive. As soon as we begin to talk about occupants and make this about adjacent neighbors or the most divisive issue of our time, we have moved far, far away from a land use question. In fact, the record is replete with legal advice to tie our decision to the zoning criteria. That was the advice of attorneys in the Area Plan Commission process that I believe occurred in March, and it was the advice of our attorneys, of our attorney, Mr. Palmer, throughout. This is not about abortion, pro-life or pro-choice, or anything in between. It's a land use decision, and I'm going to break it down.
Break it down.
In its simplest forms and strictest form by statute, a question of whether this particular parcel, this particular parcel of land, regardless of the petitioner or the occupants' beliefs, their quality or quantity of service delivered, their marketing plan or their business model, their funding source, or the price that they paid for the property, or choosing this location versus another alternative location. The basic question is, is it okay to change to an office use, specifically an office buffer use, for the purpose of a counseling center? Is it okay to change this parcel? If you go and look at the intent of the Office Business District, one of the specific things it says, "They're typically less commercial in appearance and are architecturally more harmonious with residential structures. This district concerns as a buffer between residential districts and more intense commercial industrial districts. The OB district may also serve as a gradual and reasonable transition between major thoroughfares and residential districts." The mayor's consideration, I'm sorry, the chief executive's consideration and his rationale strays from this most basic land use question of whether a proposed office is an appropriate land use next to another office. This council has said thus in other past decisions, and we will in future ones, but for the larger issues beyond the scope of this land use decision before us, my expectation is that office next to office is a zoning approval we will give every single time. And to council member Davis's point, but I think it's important that I actually state this in the record. If the land ownership was reversed and the petitioner to the east, the whole Women's Health Clinic, was before the council asking to rezon this same parcel from residential to OB, I would be supportive of that request as ardently as I am of this. The same kind of hurdles that Women's Whole Health Clinic are trying to overcome downstate are the same kind of hurdles some are encouraging members of the council to put up here. By plan and by right, they, the Women's Care Center and the whole Women's Health Clinic, have a right to offices within the Bendix Commercial Node. To those concerned that this petition will create conflict zones, safety or enforcement issues, or share the opinion of the mayor that groups diametrically opposed should not be granted permission to set up offices next to one another, I urge you to look at the commitments which the petitioner has made. I believe there are seven total.
Ms. Broden, we know those.
And I would like to enter those into the record, please, specific with tonight's testimony.
Which they're already in.
But I'd like to actually have them entered into the record. Thank you. These commitments evidence a responsiveness to the concerns expressed in the public debate. And let me go back. Why is it important, why are the commitments important to mention? They were barely mentioned in the veto message to us as a community and not even mentioned in the media coverage. So they are important because it talks about control and a willingness to tamp down and control any type of protest on this petitioner's parcel of land. Let me continue then. The commitments evidence a responsiveness to the concerns expressed in and throughout the public debate. I would like to expressly thank members Scherlich and council member Regina William Preston. They were instrumental in crafting these. Many of you have been on this council far longer than I, but I am rather certain no other petitioner has gone to such great lengths to commit through various measures to ensuring peaceful coexistence, pardon me, in the area of land that they can control. Essentially, they're controlling 100% of their parcel. Two, no other petitioner has gone to such great lengths to work to enlighten others who might think or commit to enlighten others who might think it productive to protest or shame a woman seeking health care services that by right are hers to seek. No other petitioner has a commitment, has made a commitment to work to establish communication channels to address issues that might arise with the neighbors or the neighborhood. No other petitioner but this petitioner has agreed that if there are issues and they are at fault, they will bear the cost of that enforcement. Let me be clear, we nor the mayor do not have the power by this zoning decision to affect the protests that might occur anywhere along the public right-of-way, anywhere along that street. But by approving this petition, by voting to override the veto, the commitments which the petitioner has agreed to do and which are enforceable by this council, by the neighbors and the Area Plan Commission staff can eliminate protest or harassment on the parcel owned by the Women's Care Center. Let me also be clear, if the rezoning is not granted, any subsequent residential property owner could stage protests 365 days of the year. This is not a threat. It could happen day one that the clinic neighbor opens. This was, this is not new information. This was brought to light in the public record, and it was relative to the questions about the purchase. It was in response to questions about the purchase of the property itself. We were told in the public record that the purchase itself was a blocking mechanism to block out others who are more ardent and who are more confrontational. Thank you. A veto override is a vote in favor of public discourse and the public process. The chief executive's reliance on statistics from an unknown source and which was not evidenced in the public record nor debated in this public venue before this council, the reliance on that information, that data, to veto an affirmative, albeit close, decision by this council on a rezoning ignores what was in the public record. There is deep value in sitting here, listening to people as they stand before us, state their name, provide their address and make their argument or offer us insight. In this particular case, the public record, as I stated earlier, stands from January 8th to today. And within the public record, critical facts missed in the veto statement is the innumerable times that the Women's Care Center stated that they don't contribute violence, they don't support violence, they don't allow harassment, and also any other, and they also refuted any other claims related to that. It is not fair to tag this petitioner with problems that others create. I thought that this council, through hard work, long work, through dialogue and openness crafted through public debate and our deliberations, something special, something different, something workable and perhaps a model for our country. I'm not one to wring my hands and say our community is not up to the task or that a problem is too big. We've found a way as a council. We've found a way to try to make a petition in our community next to a neighbor work, an office next to an office. This petitioner's request fits the plan, it enhances the neighborhood, it will increase property values, it's an investment of over three, over three-quarter of a million dollars year one. Its services are needed as well as the services of its neighbor. It does match the current conditions. It's an office area next to commercial, and they have appropriately included elements that will retain the residential character despite it being an office on that given parcel of land. We should vote to override this mayoral veto as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. Dr. Brenner.
Yeah, I think the purpose of the five criteria is so that we can make decisions that are based on facts, that are not based on anger, not based on emotion. If you reduce this to facts, there's a node on the west side of town, West Lincoln Way, which has within its design and its intention intended use a parcel of land. That parcel of land is intended to be office buffer. It's not intended to be anything heavily commercial, anything, it's understood it's not going to be residential in the future. So what you have is a request for an office buffer. You have it from an organization that may have disagreements with the people next door, but that's no reason to deny them the right to utilize that piece of property following this criteria the way they have. I voted in favor of it two weeks ago. I will vote again in favor. And I find myself a bit concerned that what's the purpose of an Area Plan Commission, what's the purpose of a council? If we can't have any faith in our decision that a mayor would have to override a close decision like this. I guess all our decisions in the future are going to have to be six-nothing on the council with regards to, or six-three, or it's potentially, you know, going to be an override. I think that was a disservice that drew us into an elongated process, but hopefully one way or the other ends tonight. I think the community is about to get up with this. I will continue to vote in favor of the rezoning request.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, start with you.
Thank you. I appreciate and respect all of my colleagues and their perspectives. And however, this is not personal or politically no Vegas. I am the novice of the group, and based on the criteria when I came to the council, I was given the five criteria and was also the interpretation for me. I definitely beg to differ with my colleague, Mr. Davis, about it being whether it was a Joe Blow or not, would we have changed, would I particularly have changed my vote. To me, it does not matter what type of establishment it would have been. Coming into this task, unfortunately, this is the issue that I am tasked to do and make a decision, and I am comfortable and confident in the decision that I have to make. And with the criteria, me looking at number three and number five of the rezoning criteria is solely based on my decision to support the node that I have previously stated and uphold that vote. So it doesn't matter what type of facility, and it is a little disheartening to know or to now come to see that this has become whether pro-life or abortion and it is strictly rezoning. So from the definition and the interpretation from anyone in the room, we can differ all day and still have the respect of each other. So we can all agree to disagree, and, but my criteria again is based on solely number three, that the most desirable use of knowing that there were other commercial buildings in that area. Also, the beauty of it, there are several wonderful locations of the Women's Health Care Center throughout our wonderful city that provides the service. So to that end again, it is not because it's, in this instance, an abortion clinic and a women's health care, because we still have those locations that provide those wonderful opportunities for women, men and children to get served in that capacity. So I wanted to make it very clear again that it's not political. So I wanted to make it very clear again that it's not political, it's not personal for me, it is strictly a zoning criteria to me. And not to be pressed upon someone else's perspective to get me to change my interpretation of that criteria. So again, it is disheartening to know that it has come to be a political issue or a pro-life and anti-abortion and not just looking at the facts. So again, my vote still stands as a no.
Ms. Williams, Preston.
Um, I have had lots and lots, hours upon hours, dozens of hours of conversation with the people I think are most important, the people in this community. As you know, I represent the district, one of the two districts that's going to be most affected. And so I first want to just simply thank everyone who spent time sharing their thoughts and opinions with me about this issue. It was certainly an opportunity to learn and I want to say that I really look forward to continuing the relationship that we have forged on all sides. My vote tonight will be the same as I voted earlier, based on the same criteria, criteria three, four, and five. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Okay. I guess I would like to start my comments with that this council, over the last three years, that we've operated with respect for each other, whether we have agreed or not. We have not personally attacked each other, be it in public or through the media. And my expectations regardless, we've had a number of issues on which we have not agreed, but we have handled it at a level of respect and integrity. And when one's character is being challenged, we have not responded on a personal level. And it is my hope that we would continue to operate as such. Just on last Thursday, I believe it was last Thursday, Councilwoman McBride and myself, we met with two representatives from the Women's Care Center. And at that time, they had even put on the table an additional commitment, and I promised them that I was going to share that with the entire council, which I did. I emailed the entire council. I did not receive any feedback from that email. As we begin to look at the west side and begin to look at the different planning efforts that have continued, and again, there's much work to be done. Just recently, we had contacted Community Investment to say we need to continue the conversation because the plan is not complete, we have parts of it, and there's still work that needs to be done. I said in my last comments when we met that if anyone were to say that zoning is a very black and white issue, that is not correct. Many of our tough decisions that we have had to make in the last three years has really centered around zoning. And the decisions that I tend to make, I do my homework, I try to be fair and consistent, but also this particular issue has the tendency to polarize this community, and that is unfortunate. A vote favor or vote against does not indicate that we do not support the services. I have continued to look at this from a zoning perspective, and there are certain standards that for me, this particular property has not met, and I will continue with my vote as I have indicated when we first met two weeks ago, that I did not support the zoning of the property for that reason.
Thank you.
For those reasons, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. My final comments are the same that there were seven weeks ago. To me, this is a zoning issue. Erosion of the neighborhood nodes within this, within Lincoln Way cannot be tolerated, at least for me. I did vote against the Dollar General across the street that actually took away residential neighborhood, or neighbor, a residential house as well. Like I said, there's plenty of commercial nodes up and down Lincoln Way that desperately need improvement. It is within a TIF. I sat on, as well as Ms. White, on the committee on the west side corridors for Lincoln Way and Western Avenue. What I've seen from DCI is, I think we're up to the third director in at least four years without any real vision and focus of what we're doing on Lincoln Way. I want more for Lincoln Way and honestly, like I said before, I think this would be a good opportunity for a Women's Care Center to partner with the DCI and figure out a place that could make a potential impactful difference on Lincoln Way within a node that's within the TIF district. We did a fine job of repainting, restriping the highway, or the road of Lincoln Way, and that's as far as we've gotten really on that plan. We can talk all day long about DCI. I've met with James Mueller. We are going to re-initiate the west side corridors committee that came up with that plan. And I've seen so many times before, we come up with one app plan after the next, and all they do is sit on the shelf. And we got to quit doing that. And with Lincoln Way being in my district, I want more from Lincoln Way than what's there. You know, we're fine with Eddie Street Commons on the east side and some of the things that we do downtown, but I will grant it that there are places on Lincoln Way that Community Investment don't even know about or really realize. So I'm not changing my vote. We're sticking with the criteria that we have here. We have interpretations to it. I will say, I appreciate everybody's passion. This is the democratic process. The veto, the vote prior, the veto, this is all part of the democratic process. And the way it stands will be the way it stands. With that, we've heard from council. Yes, Mr. Boardy?
We, this is our second opportunity, and we're limited to five minutes, right?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I won't take that long. I think this is unfortunate. It's a mistake, in my opinion, not because of an opinion on life or choice, but just looking at the zoning criteria, which we focus on, which are subject to interpretation. That's true. However, I think we have to be awfully careful if we're denying a legitimate petition to rezon that meets criteria right along the line because, because it may cause some potential disharmony in the neighborhood. Where do you draw the line if you're using that kind of criteria? It may do this, or it may do that, or it's disharmonious. What if somebody wants to open a gun shop? What if somebody, I mean, if it's Thora's Knit Barn? Yeah, okay, fine. That's not going to cause anything. What if it's, what if it's anything that's potentially controversial? What if it's some sort of ethnic thing that people are uncomfortable with in a neighborhood? What if it's a Muslim church? What if it's a, what if it's a black church and a, where one has not previously existed and people are uncomfortable with that? You can't turn something like that down because it may provide conflict, it may create conflict, or it may create disharmony. I think you have to stick to the facts. I can't speak to them as articulately as my colleagues, Joe and Gavin and Oliver. But I think, I think you have to be, it's unfortunate. I think you have to be awfully careful. I think the mayor was wrong. I think the mayor's wrong to impose whatever his rationale was. The rationale that he used is, is in my opinion flawed and unsubstantiated by fact. So I'm not sure where he was coming from. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks. Anything else? We have a motion to rescind a vote in favor, would to rescind, a vote against would not. We had a second. Ms. Fowler, I want to do a roll call on this.
Before we do the roll call, can we, can we, we state the motion again and clarify the motion that I put out there?
The motion was to rescind the mayor's veto on 0518.
Thank you. And?
Second second.
From John Boardy?
Yes.
I appreciate that clarification. Let's go forward.
Okay. Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Preston.
A motion to rescind means I would vote against that motion, so I would say nay.
Councilmember McBride?
Nay.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Barman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis? Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Nay.
President Scott?
Nay.
Five and four.
So therefore, our attorney, then what's, what do we, what's happening?
The motion does not carry the veto.
The veto now stands?
Right.
And so can any kind of recourse on that matter, then any petitioner would have to, could you clarify that one more time before they go?
Of course, on behalf of the petitionaries with the courts, they're not with the council, with the city government.
Okay. So it'll be with the courts and with the city government. Everybody clear? Thank you. Best wishes in court, if you go that way.
Entertaining motion for a five-minute recess. Come on, second target. All in favor? Just to remind everybody, we do have business left on the docket, so. Maybe.
Sorry. You do this video, um, what?
What's that?
And to, to tackle.
Tim.
Nate? Yes.
If you would, please.
Sorry, shake them off, thanks though. Thank you.
If you would, please, everybody not enter up here, please. Thank you.
And then, I haven't said it yet.
I think I've talked about it.
And she's, she's a secretary.
She's a secretary.
I'm really happy.
All my rowdy friends are coming over.
We have polarized. We have polarized. But I.
It's good, it's hot.
And I tried to take it very, my captain, I took it very, and then I said, another time. And I did, I said, I'm there. And I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to. It's not a good, I don't think what. I'm very, 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 I'm petitioner will pay about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, again in our estimates, over the course of the abatement. Both Anne and Charlie Hayes are here from the petitioner, in case you have any questions for them.
Yes, if they will come up and make a brief statement, and we'll keep it moving.
Good evening, I'm Anne Hayes, representing Franklin Street Technology Partners at eight fourteen Marietta Street in South Bend. Just to follow up on what Dan just explained, we are excited about this project, looking forward to developing three buildings, the first, which would be thirty thousand square feet, and look to begin construction on that soon after closing. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel, any questions?
I just have a comment at the end.
No questions, Mr. Davis, your comment?
I got you all Sidney's letter and everything else, you see, I was kinda tied up with the other situation, but I did see it, so I will respond, so I do wanna thank you for sending me that. I did read through it, and so I will respond to you soon, but, you know, just where y'all were, don't think I didn't, but I wanted to thank you for sending me that. I appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor, eighteen twenty, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, eighteen twenty, please come to the podium. Don't move away, you're all right. We'll turn it back to counsel.
Motion to approve. Stop.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. Thank you, good luck. You too, Charlie. Ms. Fowler, eighteen twenty, one, please.
Eighteen twenty-one. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three twenty East Hope Pass Avenue in South Bend, Indiana, four six six point seven, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real property tax abatement for commercial property located at the Worf Partners LLC.
Thank you, petitioner, or presenter?
Again, Dan Buckenmeyer, Community Investment, fourteenth floor of this building. So, this is the exciting, commonly known as the Worf Project, but three twenty at the Cascades, right on the river's east side, we're talking about a six-year tax abatement at a hundred percent, but again, the key point here is that this is only abating taxes on the commercial portion of this project, so anticipated is the first floor of the seven-story project. So, the abated amount would be about four hundred and thirty thousand, but the residential elements, we estimate would pay about one point five million over the course of the abatement period. And also, it's important to note, we're only talking about phase one of this project, phase one alone will bring in over nineteen million dollars in private investment. Frank Perry is here, in case you have any questions for him.
Mr. Perry, a brief statement, please. Name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, Frank Perry, thirty-six seventeen McKinley Avenue in South Bend, representing Worf Partners LLC. It is, we are excited to be bringing this project to fruition after many, many years and a lot of study and planning, and appreciated your support of our abatement and reference to this project. We think it'll be exciting, it's the last piece of the riverfront, and with what everybody's been doing, the state and local government, we're excited.
Thank you, any questions from counsel? When we go to phase two, be ready.
Mr. Davis? You ask the tough questions, huh? Yeah, I just wanted to know what was... Well, right after phase one. I love your answer, but, I mean, what's, but... We would love to be able to do it immediately following phase one, and that's our plan. As long as things get absorbed and things look good, and we fill that commercial space, and with all the other investments going on, I'm just real happy to see South Bend moving forward like it has in the last few years, and that's why I think this project's moving forward, so.
Okay. How about peace? Thank you, beautiful building, too.
Thanks, thanks.
Open up the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium and speak on eighteen twenty-one. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, eighteen twenty-one, please come to the podium. Turn back counsel.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Fowler, eighteen twenty-one, please.
Eighteen twenty-two.
Oh, eighteen twenty-two, thank you.
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, electing to participate in the Public Employees Retirement Fund, My Choice Retirement Savings Plan, as administered by the Indiana Public Retirement System.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee have a committee meeting, and we send this bill, make this resolution, eighteen twenty-two, with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Yes, counsel, here, Clark, I'm with Human Resources on the twelfth floor of this building.
Thank you.
Before you, it's a resolution to approve an additional option for an employee benefit plan through INPERF, that's the Public Retirement System's Public Employee Retirement Fund, I always have to read the acronym, it's PERF, as many of you know it. Under the current program, all employees are required to participate in the PERF Hybrid Plan, under this plan, employee becomes vested after ten years. We're finding that when we talk to employees, they don't see that as much of a benefit because of the long vesting schedule, so we've talked with PERF, and they have a relatively new program that is called My Choice, it allows for a shorter vesting period, it looks a little bit more like the vesting schedule of a typical four-year, private organization, twenty percent a year, one hundred percent vested after five years. And so, this is only something that would be available to employees hired on or after July one, two thousand and eighteen, so once employees who are after that date are hired, will have a sixty-day period to decide whether they would like to participate in the traditional hybrid plan, or if they would like to participate in the My Choice Plan. If they do not, they will default into the My Choice Plan. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from counsel? Seeing none. I will say, I like the idea, I think it will help with our recruitment, and also, I like the versatility to it, so thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, eighteen twenty-two, please come to the podium. Seeing none, turn it back to counsel.
Motion for adoption.
Second, Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. We're going to first readings, Ms. Fowler, would you please read twenty-two eighteen?
Twenty-two eighteen, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, first, North South Alley, fourteen feet width and width line west of Fellowes and Carroll Street, east of Michigan Street, bound north by the South Riderway of Bronson Street, bound to the south by then North Riderway of the Penn Central Railroad, running approximately two hundred and forty-eight point seventy-eight feet, and left.
I'd like to move that this be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, is there any unfinished business at this point?
Mr. President?
I think your new business.
I'm sorry.
That was wrong, Dave.
Yes, we need to... We're gonna get to it. I'm sorry. So... Is there any unfinished business at this point? Nope, new business. Can I entertain a motion to move the May twenty-eighth county council meeting to May twenty-ninth because of Memorial Day? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I'd like to give a heads up to the council. Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I'm gonna submit a letter of resignation.
Are you serious?
Yes, I am. To the county court's office. I do it, I'm happy to say, for all the right reasons, there is, it's been twenty-two and a half years, I think there's some opportunity to just travel, I felt very guilty about missing some of the budget meetings last year, and I know the budget season is soon upon us, I have enjoyed working with everybody, the old ones and the new ones. You do, Tom. I have enjoyed the relationships I've built with city employees and city staff, it's been educational, it's been informational, it's been a very positive experience for me. So that will tomorrow, I have a letter, so I'll have a copy, mayor, I was gonna bring yours up tomorrow, I will just give it to you tonight.
Effective when?
According to state statute, thank you, Bob Holmer, it has to be effective immediately, so I'll deliver tomorrow to the, uh, the fork of the court, it will be official. So, again, it's been a great experience. Mr. Oliver?
I don't want it.
Mr. White? Thank you.
President Scott, do we not accept?
I'd like to make a motion that we, a motion that we not accept his resignation? Can we override this vote tonight?
Kevin?
Sure.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think this is a point where this council needs to make a brief moment this, and say something, this is shocking even to me, and let's like...
I'm trying not to get emotional, but I am, today has not been a, it's been a great day, and it's also been a day which unfortunately, has not been a good day, and Dr. Warner, you could just add it to that, I'm happy for you to be able to travel, to be with your family, but it has been a sincere joy working with you, your integrity, your commitment to doing what's best for all citizens, and how you've worked with me personally and others, I highly respect that, I will tremendously miss you, I enjoy our conversations, even though in certain issues, we did not vote the same way, but we've always maintained that level of professionalism, as well as respect.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you, and I wish you...
Kevin?
Yeah, this is tough, we don't have any comments prepared, but no, it's been, it's been really nice, you know, serving with you, you know, your leadership and your experience has been really valuable for this council, as well as just your professionalism and the level of respect you show, you know, to council members even when there are disagreements, so it's, I'm really happy for you with whatever you're doing next, but certainly really sad to see you go.
Thank you. Mr. Wardy?
You're the best Republican I know.
Unfortunately, in this county, it's probably the only one you know.
Oh, my God. I hope that, if there's any chance that your forwarding address is Bloomington.
There are, there's no plans to be anywhere other than South Bend.
Well, okay, oh, gosh, what a loss. Okay, that'll, that'll take some while.
We will, we'll have another opportunity for the celebration. Vice President Davis?
I've been eleven years, and wow, it's, I guess in my life this year, so many of my colleagues who have worked for so a long period of time, are retiring, are moving on, and you have added to that list, it's been a tough month for me, and this is not cool. I respect you probably, I mean, in ways that you'd never kind of ever met, it's just been, it's been something, and there was, mm, wow, the best thing, I would say this, when we worked together on that whole AEP thing, that was something for me, to watch how you think and how you process it, and I appreciated that because it forced me to learn how to work across aisles and think things differently, and force myself to say, I don't wanna lose your vote, you don't wanna lose my vote, how do we come together? I keep that in my documents on a lot of things, and, because that was, that was probably, there's different bills you work on throughout your career that you remember, that's one that I refer to a lot when I talk to people, and I use that as an example when I talk to classes, of how you and I worked together on that, and, so, that's all I can say right now, I, that's all I can say.
Joe Broden?
Dave, thanks for your commendable and long and exemplary service to the city of South Bend entirely, and also to your district, you have been an outstanding voice and perspective for a long, long time, very talented, wish you much joy and happiness as you go into your next endeavors.
Just by way of history, for those of you who are younger, when I was first elected, John Broden...
Came to our wedding.
So that goes back a few years, thank you.
Sir, go on. Ms. McBride?
Dr. Warner, I have not known you personally that long, but I recall the first time coming into the office, you asking if I would continue on with the projects that, you know, my predecessor started off with, and I immediately said, absolutely, and I most recently recall going to the NEC Pen Association meetings, and when we're talking about curb sidewalks, speaking with Ms. Fowler and Martha Quals, and saying, when I got sent the updated list for curbs and sidewalks, my first response was, does this include what Dr. Warner talked about? Because I wanna make sure that we are working together and fulfilling what you have asked and what Mr. Kelly had asked, so what I would hope to do is to always be fair and consistent and have as much integrity that you have had, I've heard nothing but great things about you on both sides, so I'm one who like to work together with people and try to make an informed and fair decision, and I really, really respect you from over the years of me coming and seeing how city and council work, so I appreciate the service, and I wish that I would have had an opportunity to be taken under your wings.
Not long, thank you.
Well, I'm just amazed, because this is like the perfect example of what they say, never put off for tomorrow what you could do today, since I got on this council, I have been told by many of your colleagues, you know, you need to go talk to Warner, like he's really great, he'll teach you a lot, and like, yeah, yeah, I gotta do that, and this and that, and so, what Sharon said in terms of she wishes she had the opportunity, now I'm in the position where I had the opportunity, really gonna take advantage of it, and I'm really disappointed, I'm shocked by this news, and I really, really, I'm like, why didn't I pick up the phone and make that coffee date? So I've learned something from this, and I'm really sad that I won't have the opportunity, but maybe, do we have the opportunity to hire consultants? But, you know, I noticed over this time that, you know, we often, you know, vote, I don't know, maybe I better check the record, but it feels like we are of the same mind, we vote on the same things, and so, that also taught me a lesson of, you know, Democrat, Republican, it's really not about that, and I think it was demonstrating that, you know, you do have a fair and balanced way of looking at things, and your history and your experience really guides you in those things, so I wanna appreciate you for that, and now learning from this, John, I'm gonna call you tomorrow, but I really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
So Dave, you and I talked about this over dinner tonight, it's one thing that I will miss, you're the best Democrat Republican I know. You're my favorite. No, my wife and I noticed you doing interviews as the lone Republican for many, many years, you know, in, you always brought common sense to it, I always took note of when you were on TV, I don't know why, you just, the things that you're saying seem common sense and made sense, I appreciate, you know, I give you grief about being a Republican, but we do talk through a lot, like Karen White said, we don't always agree on the vote, but the dignity and respect that you've given to every one of these council members, and no hard feelings on any of the votes that we've taken over the years, even tonight, you're calm, collected on all that, you'll be definitely missed, and as I said to Dave today, it's like, you better find someone that's just like you, because I don't know what we're gonna do, but my wife said, even before I ran, she goes, when I was running and won the primary, she goes, okay, it's the next Warner, watch what he does. she goes, okay, it's the next Varner, watch what he does. Well, I was way down there, but I think you, and no disrespect to any council members, but you and Karen have taught me so much, and I truly appreciate that.
Thanks, wife. Thank you. So I can see the deed is done. I thank God for your comments, and, well, we'll see what the next floor brings.
Yeah, we got internships.
Thank you, Oliver.
We have to accept this, Mr. Palmer.
So, once they turn that in, I think it's a ten-day process for them to elect someone to replace Dave.
A ten?
Ten days.
As soon as ten days.
So, as soon as ten days. So as soon as we can get someone. But I talked to Dave, he's gonna introduce myself and whoever gets that position, and we'll bring them in, just like we did with Sharon, and get them into orientation.
The way the replacement is, I will make an appointment, bring him to the mayor's office and to let rocks. So thank you, Karen.
Dave, do you intend to remain on the Redevelopment Commission until we get a replacement?
I assume, I assume my appointment as a citizen, and if it's okay with the council, I will finish that term.
And honestly, we've done that with Randy as a citizen member appointed by the council, no different, you know, he just doesn't sit on council. That appointment is up, you know, for citizen members or whomever, so I have no problem with that as well, so. Wow. One other thing is, we are going through internship resumes right now for council, and we talked about PR positions, so I'll give you guys a heads up on when we get that narrowed down. Jill Broden, you have something you want to talk about?
Yes, just an update from today's solid waste management district meeting.
Good. No quorum?
There was a quorum, and the group decided to open up a satellite facility in Mishawaka.
Same price?
Who knows what the price will be. It does not, today's move, in my opinion, did not address the funding issues in a financially responsible way in terms of equal bearing of the costs for people who would like to participate in HHW. As you all may recall, most of our community is tagged with paying eleven dollars. The proposal that was approved today equates to about a six-dollar deal for the residents of the city of Mishawaka to participate in the very same program. The city of Mishawaka and the members who voted in favor of this facility, and it will be at the same facility that it was formerly at, on Fifth Street, voted, I'm sorry, I got lost, voted not to, voted basically to fund the program through the city of Mishawaka's budget. So there's a lot of unknowns about the impact of having an additional site, particularly since we are only five or six months into the site here in South Bend, that we moved primarily as a cost-saving measure to the district. So that is one significant issue. It'll most likely take effect June 1. As I said, I believe there's some equity issues in terms of fee versus being paid through a city budget. I didn't, just to let you know, as your representative on this district, I felt that that was backtracking in terms of where we've been in financing our services, in particular for household hazardous waste. Second piece of information was, I lost it, give me a second. Household hazardous waste fee. Oh, and two, we did open up bids for the recycling program, and this would be a provider selected for 2019, starting in 2019, and two companies bid, and those are open today, those will be evaluated with the help of some of our city staff, in particular Therese DeRoe, John Leschinsky, a couple others. But basically, they will be charged with looking at the price and performance of those two bids, with the hope of obviously incorporating that into our budgets. But I think we are at the point where we have separated out recycling from HHW, but costs, and that's movement for this body, for the body and for the district, but we have failed to bring an equitable measure to the fee structure that I and others had hoped to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to share with the council members, some were present, along with the mayor and others within the community. We launched our Not in Our Community initiative, a response to synthetic drugs within our community. We had a press conference today at 1:00 P.M., and it was very well-attended, excellent information. I would make sure that the council members that you get a copy of the information that was shared, I had sent this information to the council early on. There is plenty of work to be done. I encourage council members that once you look at the various standing committees, if you would want to join any of those committees, we welcome their involvement. But this is an initiative that we will be involved with for the long run, and is to really address not only the impact of synthetic drugs within our community, but we see this as a public health issue as well.
Thank you, Ms. White. I do want to mention that on Friday is the Fallen Officers Memorial.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Yeah, at the police station. I know council members attend, I will be speaking again, so that's well-respected, good thing to do. Ms. Broden, and then you...
Just another announcement, more from the MACOG camp, the group that I also serve on. It is Bike to Work Week, so if you made it in the rain today, great, you should get rewarded tomorrow. If you do bike, there is a breakfast on the concourse of the Hall of Fame tomorrow morning. And of course...
Seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah, and what we're trying to do is to encourage folks to log their miles, book their miles, and pop them in online. That does go, you know, when we are looking for state, federal funding, that type of data in terms of the community public and the bike-riding public, really does matter. So encourage people to participate it and help the environment, get some good exercise at the same time.
Vice President Davis.
Just saying that Councilwoman McBride, Councilwoman Broden, and I were at the Women's Mothers Against Violence March on Saturday morning, and so it didn't rain too hard on us, and it was well-attended, and so, and appreciate Councilwoman McBride's statement, she spoke on behalf of the council, and appreciated her thoughts, and it was a good day for us to, and good turnout of people there at the march and at the park as we marched together.
Thank you. I want to thank council members that showed up for that, I appreciate you guys representing, Joe was there, Oliver Davis, Sharon was there.
If I can add to Oliver's remarks, the Moms Against Violence Now has a website and a Facebook page, and a lot of that was brought forth by a collaborative effort of Notre Dame students. And another, I think, terrific development is that they are now partnering more intentionally with the Moms Demand Action Group. And I think I would like to take this opportunity to lift the long-serving members, the founding members, Bobby White and others, and to lift them up in the hard work that they have been doing, and in particular, supporting mothers and families whenever we do have a death in our community due to violence. They're there, they've always been there, and there are some terrific developments that they are making, both organizationally, and they contribute phenomenally to our gain violence initiative by always being a voice at those call-in events. So they do outstanding work, and I encourage individuals to look them up and to support them. They've been a long bedrock in our efforts here.
Yeah, this council recognized them a few years back with resolution. Also, this council made a donation to them for their security raceroom or their insurance for the event, so we funded that the last couple of years, I think it was a good way to do our part on that. So, Mary, would you like to say anything?
Thanks for recognizing me. First of all, a quick public service announcement, I believe the Bike to Work Breakfast has been rescheduled for weather reasons. I think I'll be pushing it by Wednesday. But I'll check on that. I can't let Dr. Varner's announcement obviously go without comment, so I join everybody else in expressing a certain amount of shock, but also agreeing that you've certainly earned a very enjoyable retirement, that the city's in your debt, and that I take it to be very good news that you've agreed to continue to serve on the Redevelopment Commission, so that we still have our focus on you a little bit. As has been remarked by other Democrats in the room, if more people in your party were like you, and candidly, if more people in my party were like you, our country would be a better place. And we have agreed on some things, and we've disagreed on other things, but even, or especially when we have not been in agreement, I've admired your expertise, your reasoning, your honesty, it has been straightforward, it's been delivered without the inflection of ego. I've learned a great deal from our first cup of coffee when you made time for me when I was still running for mayor, all the way through many times that we've gotten together, and I've found your command of how this city works is going to be very difficult to make up for as a lead of council. Let me just pay you one other honor that, they say the highest and rarest honor available to the mayor's given to the city, but I'll give you one that's even more rare, because I don't know that I've ever said this to somebody in public. It's almost physically impossible for me to say this. There have been many occasions, some of them important, on which it has proved to be the case that you were right and I was wrong. There, I said it. Again, times when we've been on different sides of the issue, times when we've been very much on the same page through it all, I've admired your service to the city, and will miss you greatly, and we count on you when you say you're gonna remain involved. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with all that, we turn to privilege of the floor. Gavin Furlik will give you a 30-second exit warning on your three minutes. You can come to council, speak to them on anything that was not on tonight's agenda. This is time for you to talk to council, you're talking to us, no one else. The council will not comment back to you or question, but if there is something that needs to be addressed, we will certainly take that up. Mr. Brown, you're up first. Show me how it's done.
I live in San Antonio, Brown, I live at 202 East Nevada, I'm a citizen of South Bend, the region of Russians, because basketball game is getting ready to start, so I gotta go. But what do y'all remember about Varner? He was straightforward, and if you ever talked to him, whether you considered it or not, he was not gonna fall back on you. He told it like he was. I respect you a lot.
Thank you, sir.
And there ain't too many people I can say that to, but I can say that to you with open faith. And if I ask you something, I was scared every time, but you gonna tell me. You gonna tell me like you felt, and I respect that. And I hope that whatever you endeavor with this after you leave this council, I may really go with, you know, I spent 36 years on a job, and I know what that feels like. I know one part of you probably torn, but you gotta do what's best for you, because I was like that when I left the job. Okay, thank you, and I'm gonna move on to this. Okay, election, I'm really passionate about voting. Voting is something really good in my heart, but I felt I was cheating, because I usually try to be a guy that looks at the facts of the candidate of voting. Sometimes you don't get it all right. But me and Mr. Homigack, man, had a lot of dialogue, because I grew up in the streets, and the thing about it is, Redmond was also a qualified candidate. But the thing that bothers me about my vote this time was, both of us qualified, but there was police tapes. I would always be wondering, did I vote against a single individual, because it's something I thought was there. I really feel that people that have the power, to give their permission out to the citizen and be fair about it, I think that's your duty. There was police tapes. And when I went in and voted, I don't know. I know I voted, and I don't have a problem with it, I voted for Redmond, because there was police tape hardening. And I wish that today, standing in front of you guys, I wish I had knew all the facts, so I should have voted clean with my conscience. That's all I gotta say about it.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
I need some help from Graham or anyone to pass this to you. It's the second row, the middle is my father.
Name and address, sir.
1941 Rod Goodchild, Bonnland Park, the zoo. Live a block away from it, 837 South 24th. This Graham goes to each one of...
Yeah, I'll take him.
This, to get out of, quickly, when we were struggling to get the first tree put up in front for Ella Morris, who my mother was, someone that was on every committee, involved in every fundraiser. She did many activities for the city and for St. Anthony's Mary, and you name it. But Ella Morris was somebody that was very dear to our family, and we had that, we got that. Dave Varner was the one that got in contact with the head of Zoological President and said, put it there, and we did, and it was done. That's the leadership that I cannot speak highly enough about, and I can't thank you enough, Dr. Varner, I know Susan thanks you, my wife, for all the years that you took care of her dental needs, she still hasn't gone to the dentist since you retired. Everybody else is telling me you've been waiting the best. This is something that I'll get away quickly, I've worked with him for over a year, it was from the flag to flag to flag, he states categorically, as he summarizes, yes, in the spirit of this, we acknowledge we have the power to have our right. The elders said that they had to own the land before they put a flag up, if they don't own, on a land, they can't put the flag up. So I got a flag, and I gave it to Aaron Terry, and I said, we don't need it to be put up anymore, because if we don't own the land, on a land, so that doesn't make any difference. My father came from the open, and as you can see, I highlighted in the open, it's the center of the Menominee Tribe, Chief Menominee was head of Pontlewood Nation. So when you see of somebody, the Graham Dory was... So when you see of somebody, that Graham Doy was there in 1855, I met her at five in 1955, my heart goes out to that Indian tribe.
You have 30 seconds.
And all I'm asking for is that we got a stone, you can see it, it has my father on there so proud. It says honor for Robert F. Goodchild, because it's funded by the Goodchild Family Trust. We take for every single tree, 14 of them, I take credit for. One came in from Victor, because he was in his private stock. The other was a joint project with the city, they put it in the hole, and it has--
And Rod, I apologize, your time is up.
December 21st, 2017.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I hope that it'll be up by the 29th for best week ever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next, name and address, please.
Gary Marsh, 1520 South Carroll Street. I've been here a couple of times now, well, more than a couple. And every time, it seems like every time I come, I'm talking about the same issue, those trailers on Michigan Street. My issue hasn't changed, they're still there. My issue hasn't changed because the city hasn't looked for a new place to put those trailers, okay? It seems like they're dropping that ball in the people's lap on the southeast side, that we need to find a place to put them. Well, that's their job, and they need to do their job. My job is to convince you not to let those trailers stay where they are. But it's also to convince you that the people on the southeast side don't have a problem helping people that need help. But one thing that my father always told me, your help needs to start at home first. And southeast side is my home, I live there. So first of all, I need to help myself. And by doing that, I need to say to you again, let's move those trailers. Let's put them someplace where they're not in the middle of somebody's neighborhood. Let's put them someplace, let's spread out, let's spread the wealth out amongst the whole community, rather than just leave it in one area all the time. And with that, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marching to our end. All favor. All opposed. Good night, everybody.